May I welcome the councillors Carr, Iron and Wadsworth. I know it's not your first meeting but it's your first meeting with them.
Yeah.
Welcome to the council and I hope you enjoy your time with us.
Thank you.
Also councillor Stubbs is permitted to remain seated tonight without requiring to stand.
Thank you.
Okay. Good. Apologies. We have apologies from councillor Ockins due to the delay. Can I propose one for that please?
I propose.
And councillor Howard, second call, those in favour? Unanimous. My declaration of interest, are there any disclosure or pecuniary interests which you may have in respect of the items on the agenda? Or any other interests which you may have in respect of items to the agenda? If you are, you should declare them tonight and sign the book. And you're also reminded to inform the clerk of any changes in your register of members' interests. Please do that.
Yes.
Okay councillor.
Item eight part two.
Eight two? Yes.
As treasure of Victoria Hall. I wasn't involved in the decision to use Victoria Hall as I think.
So, I will remain?
I will remain, I won't take part in any debate concerning that particular thing.
All right. All right.
All right.
There's someone else?
Yes. That is it, isn't it? Item eleven, number two because my daughter did the browning.
Okay. So item eleven two, because of your link with the brand.
Yeah.
Okay then.
Not double.
Okay. Minutes of the meeting held on the twenty fourth of February twenty sixteen. Any comments? Yes, I've got one. Oh my. Oh good sir. I understand that there's one error in this and that there's a typo error. Line, sorry, so minute oh five two sixteen. One, two, three, four. The fifth line down after councillor Stan Stubbs, they should be unanimously resolved. Now I can't propose this if I was absent from this meeting, so does anybody wish to propose that?
I didn't pick that up.
Okay. After your names, huh?
Which item was that again, sorry?
Oh five two sixteen, accounting software and external preparation of two twenty fifteen sixteen accounts. The fifth line down. The line starts councillor Stan Stubbs and after that they should be unanimously resolved, that Oakham Town Council purchaser. There's no result of the vote included in that minute.
That wasn't to do with, sorry, that wasn't to do with the accounts thing, was it? That wasn't to do with the accounts and streets?
Software.
No, that was just the software, wasn't it?
Software, yes, yes.
Because I think there was something included in the item together, wasn't there, about appointing streets for seven hundred pounds?
Which is the paragraph following.
Yeah, which is.
This is purely for the software.
Because I didn't vote for that.
No, you should be. There is no record of a vote, that's what we're saying. Councillor Stubbs?
Propose.
Both having left just to vote.
No, they were going to be.
Councillor Howard, okay. All those in favour, please?
We amend it.
Shall we amend the minutes, yes? Hey. We've got abstentions. Nine votes for. Two abstentions. Thank you. Okay, now can, any other points on the minutes? Okay, can we accept the minutes are amended, please?
Second.
Okay councillor Howard, councillor Stubbs. All in favour of accepting the minutes, that's amended?
Sorry, chairman, I wrote my comments and they've been ignored, my name is spelt incorrectly. And I sent it in plenty of good time with, and I assume that I had time to read it. Well, there was more than one, I sent it to the clerk and there was something else wrong, so I assume there is another mistake, I can't remember offhand what it was.
Can you identify where the error is?
Well, in, on the first, the first one that jumps off the page where my name is spelt wrong is fourteen nine sixteen and it's more than once on there.
Yes, I see, four paragraph, there's no E.
But now I can't remember offhand what my email was, but there was a point where there was something else wrong.
Would you accept it if we amend your name where it occurs to be B R double O K E S throughout the minutes?
You can do, but also could the clerk maybe look for the email because it will be.
No, but we're accepting your.
No, because I pointed out an error.
Something else?
Yes, but I can't remember what it is.
When did you send us?
Um, as basically the next day after I'd read it through when we were asked to send it.
Is that probably the email today, but that should have come through.
I know, but that was straight after this meeting almost.
Okay, well, I mean, if you can't remember all the tips, I can't make any amendments to the minutes now.
I don't think it was that serious, but it's a bit frustrating if you do go through something and.
Well, I mean, I regretted all of them last and I apologise that I missed that one off, I apologise.
No, no, no problem, I just.
Okay.
We'll move on.
Okay, well, all I can say is the amendment which we proposed there where your name is, where it occurs as B R double O K S. This is amended to be R double O K E S. And also the amendment already agreed to minute oh five two sixteen. Okay, can I have a, have a, before I even say councillor Howard, just a second there? Councillor Stubbs. All those in favour of the minutes are amended? I can't, that's not.
I'm really doing this.
Nine two.
I'm fighting. This is frustrating because I clearly wrote down three.
Sorry, I can't, I can't give you the conversation.
Can you not cause any problems with this? Awesome, we got it, because seventeen sixteen is seventeen sixteen. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a sign as I'm, apparently I look okay.
Yep, that's it.
I was really.
Okay, on to next. Which is, where's mine? Okay councillor's questions, I've received one question from councillor Brooks. And it reads, I am concerned that the cemetery working group is not providing reports or recommendations for the full council to consider. When will the working group be providing full reports and recommendations related to this major project? And the response is that the working group was originally set up on the ninth of September twenty fifteen. And on the thirtieth of October twenty fifteen, it had a meeting with the Rutland County Council. On the third of November, there was a slideshow update which was also shared with all members and forwarded in March twenty sixteen. On the ninth of December, there was a council agenda item there which formally agreed to take over the cemetery and asked that the O T C solicitor to review the heads of terms of the contract. On the thirtieth of December, there was a tour of the cemetery by the chairman of the working group and myself. On the sixteenth of January twenty sixteen, town councils conducted a tour of the cemetery on their own. And then on the twenty seventh, there was a question and answer session following that tour where members were able to question, raise questions from whatever they saw. On the fifteenth of February, there was another meeting with R C C. And then on the twenty fifth of February, there was a working group meeting with councillor Elliot and William Perslow, Smithers Perslow. On the fact finding session. So all those reports and agendas, items and recommendations have come forward in the six months or so that the working group has been formed. And all we can say is that R C C are presently undertaking work and further reports will be provided in the future at relevant points. Okay, thank you.
Graham Cooley from St James's.
Graham Cooley, not that. Right, not William Perslow.
Yes, I've had to report. Hardly looked at the man being connected.
Okay. And next one is chairman and members' reports.
Oh yeah, yes. Well, it was going to be interesting that the watch just ran out there by Alf, who'd been prepared in anticipation of tonight's meeting anyway, so I don't really need to do that. But we did a slideshow for all councillors last year, which has been sent around to everybody. And I was going to suggest that because of where we're moving to, it'd be appropriate probably to have another informal meeting with all councillors to come along and bring everybody up to speed, certainly what's been happening in the last week. One of the sticking points on the cemetery is that we are still waiting for our solicitors to come back with any feedback on the heads of terms. But there's a belief in agenda item coming up at the next council meeting with anyone. I attended the Oakham allotment society meeting on Friday, I think it was, in lieu of Alf being on holiday or recovering from his holiday. Or having a holiday from the holiday, I'm not sure what he did. Anyway, I went there with Julia and it was a very good event. And the amalgamation of the allotments and what they're doing with the loss of the one from Brooke Robins talked about, so they seem to be jelling together quite well. Michael, having himself attended the Oakham Town Centre meeting, remember, everybody was wanting to go on this and it was, could only unfortunately be two people. You don't have to write this down, Richard, I'll give you this tight tap here. Basically, the event consisted of a presentation by councillor Tony McVice on the ward members' vision, this is the Rutland County Council. Ward members' vision for Oakham Town Centre. Basically, a strong positive message from R C C ward members who want to see the town centre regeneration become reality. There was a presentation from Dave Brown, one of the officers of Rutland County Council, on the effects of the level crossing on the Oakham Town Centre. For the foreseeable future, the current downtime of the barrier will not be changing, in other words, it's not going to be extending in the near future. Presentation by a specialist general town regeneration expert covering general town centre regeneration, urban design and pedestrian slash traffic integration. Which was followed by another specialist from an organisation who connect expertise across services, markets and geographies to deliver transformative outcomes. So it was very much a briefing on what is out there. An open forum afterwards for the views and discussions from the room and an open dialogue between the parties present was encouraged and will continue to be engaged. And the beginning of what can be described as a high level consultation approach to addressing a town centre strategy that was established with a view to further meetings. With potential options for future appraisal being the way forward. And the next meeting is due. This is a very high level report, I can't go into detail because the meeting wasn't detailed, so that's that there, Richard. The band concerts have all been confirmed and now in the books, so this is from the Promotions Working Group. I'm going to ask Alison to send them all round and she'll be looking for people to, if she's not already asked, to sort of help support these when they kick off on June the twelfth. And we'll be giving her full reports as well at the next council meeting on what's happening with the beacon lighting and also the June the twelfth Queen's celebrations events at Gellington Park. I think that's it.
Thanks. Thank you. I haven't let anyone else. I've attended one function since the last report I made and I also attended a few moments late, Roger Beggy, the leader of Rutland County Council at Greatham on the fifteenth of February twenty sixteen. Can I also remind members that I have a charity event on the sixth of April in Victoria Hall where it is called Meet Charles Hamson. Which is, he's a TV auctioneer who's coming in to give an evening methodology. Which I hope will fulfil the £14.50 tickets which this is on. Though I trust that Lander will be buying into that. Okay councillor, word back again.
Sorry, I just, on your desks, in your desk places, there's the Oakham, in Rutland leaflet. This has been redone after the first one came out and had proof across the centre in some cases. And there'd been, a police station was located on Station Road, the police station has now been removed because it's been sold. So this is the leaflet, all it is is a revamp of the Oakham leaflet that was done by the town council. It had been in the making for some time, so this has now been produced. When this was passed around to the council, as was in October two thousand and fifteen, there was only one, I won't say negative input, but there was only one person that turned around and said that we shouldn't have the leaflet. Everybody else seemed to be in support of it, which is why this design went ahead. So there's now been another lot ran and printed and that will be signed off anyway in the strategy documents of the week. But that's what the current document is, these are with the, Richard in the office, so there's, that's another thousand leaflets. And if need more, they'll be pretty. And then whoever takes over next year from Promotions Working Group can fill the boots on that one. Thank you chairman.
Okay. Okay, classroom board.
Thank you chairman. The trunk is as brief as possible. Councillor Mrs. Withers, I've myself met with Historic England on Friday the fourth of March. For newer members, we've been asked for quotations for boat top fencing around Cuts Close to match that, that has been installed around a castle. And it was Helen Woodhouse, Dr Helen Woodhouse from Historic England who we walked around with now. But so there, during discussions, it became apparent that there may be wider scope to improve the park. Pathways, drainage, entrances, et cetera, et cetera. This is a very long term project. Historic England will be very supportive of any plans, but obviously with a new schedule, monitoring consent. I put there the cost will be considerable, that will be for archaeological, for the fencing, for everything. So it'll be up to members to sort of say what they want to do next, but the main possibility is a grant application to the Heritage Lottery Fund for that work. So that's just out there now with you. You've got some, also some information there about a walk of witness on the twenty fifth of March, which I've copied for you. Last meeting or the meeting before it was raised by one of the members about the possibility of a remate on our C C T V contribution. I understand that that has been raised internally at Rutland County Council, so I'm just waiting for confirmation that a rebate will be forthcoming. Now, the next two are dispensations and procedures for getting an item onto an agenda. Really for newer members and also a reminder for all of you, I'm not going to read through it, you've got it all there. If you need to, if you want to speak on an item but you can't because you've got an interest, let me know. In most cases, I am more than happy to grant a dispensation. And how to get an item onto the agenda as well, just to remind everybody, okay? I'm not going to read through all of it, chairman, because it's going to go too well.
Declarations by members of the public, can I take it there'll be no declarations, no members of the public? On to, yeah, no questions for the classroom board?
No, I just, sometimes you do allow it, so I was going to ask if I could just make a quick comment, sort of question about.
Comment.
Yeah. I noticed and I've heard things about this fence that people are going for quotes around Cuts Close. Now, this hasn't been to council and, yes, Richard did slightly touch on that we'd make decisions about what we might spend our money on. I would hope that decisions wouldn't be made without bringing this to council, that's all.
Can't be made without bringing it to council.
Exactly, that, this is just a fact finding mission at the moment and it will be brought to the council.
You can't spend, can't spend it without council, sorry.
No.
Okay. Working groups and steering groups, strategy assurance. Okay, you have two reports there, one, the first report is the Oakham Community Centre Working Group, which is Kendix B. On green paper. This is really just a note. It's the C C building on Princess Avenue. Yes councillor?
Yes, I, obviously I sent an email about this, if someone may have seen it. And I'm very concerned that the working group is discussing leases and fees with organisations such as the Kit Boxing Club. When this council hasn't set any fees. And I'm very disappointed to read that the Kit Boxing Club feels it can't afford it. The other week, we set a preset of nine thousand pounds additional to cover the loss of the income of that. So there should be no time when a working group is telling. People who approach us like this for the use of whatever we call it officially, the community centre, and then they go away feeling they can't use it or can't afford it. When we haven't even set a fee. And I'd like the working group to be given, no offence to them, but I've totally lost track of what that working group is supposed to be achieving. And I would like them to have clearly defined terms of references. And I believe we should also go out and get a quote to see what the market value is of the property plus letting. Because we have a document filed away showing that actually when it was in a poor state of repair some three years ago, that we could rent it for twelve thousand pounds plus a year. And we ended up renting it out after spending sixty thousand pounds doing it up for nine thousand pounds a year. So, but we can forget that, it happened. But we cannot be discussing with people like out of the rut on terms which were based on the previous tenant. They had no authority to do that. We need to sit down and decide and find out the true facts of what it's worth and then say to the working group, find us tenants and this is the cost. Because I'm disappointed that we have.
You did say it short.
Yeah, I'm really, so I'm just finishing, very disappointed that a community club has now felt that Oakham Town Council can't accommodate them.
Okay, thank you chairman.
Can I just, can I just?
I don't want to make a lot of sense of it.
Okay, just answer those. First of all, the working group has a clearing nick which was given by the chair of council, which it is working to. Secondly, organisations that have expression, an expression of interest in the building have been given indicative costs for leasing. Based on advice from the clerk. No contracts that we negotiate are entered into. All parties that show an interest have been told quite clearly that the working group does not have authority to enter into any negotiations with them. But it is only right and proper that they should have indicative costs, otherwise they don't know where they're coming from.
I don't want to back into.
No, I'm not going to do any more, any decision on this will come before council and council will decide on the rest.
I know that the comment, the indicative.
The next one is the neighbourhood land steering group. Now, this is coming before you because there's expenditure required. If you look at the bottom of Kendix C, you'll see that the working group wished to hire Victoria Hall for a hundred pounds and also to have marketing materials produced at two hundred pounds. The. The budget for this is fifteen hundred pounds in this present year and the spend so far is a hundred and seventy pounds. So this is coming for you for recommendation for expense, councillor Brooks?
Yeah, I have no objection to the fee for Victoria Hall, it seems reasonable. But I am concerned, and it keeps popping up, we don't actually get a proper price for marketing materials or a break down and it's, and more recently, we just seem to save two hundred pounds. And it seems a lot of money. And these leaflets are not being delivered to households or, you know, we had some very nice leaflets for the neighbourhood. And I think they've probably gone now, but there was a lot left. And I'm concerned by this, where we just asked to approve figures that are not the true figure. We're supposed to approve figures based on quotes.
Any other comments?
It's not difficult, yeah.
Sorry, it's nothing to do with what we're discussing. I just wanted to point out a type and error, it's neighbourhood pan steering group.
Yes, we've just been noting that. You probably also did stage you with.
It's probably a very nice pan.
Cam and a sort, chairman. Yeah, so we've just picked out.
I think that was.
We just started the author of this later on.
Now, we have finds of cakes.
Yeah. Did you want to answer this question from councillor Brooks that you've raised? All right.
Yeah, Karen, we, at this stage, we don't know the cost, that cost for marketing materials will be posters and leaflets. Because they yet to be designed, until they're designed, we can't get a quote for them. So as, as it's quite normal practice, we put in place for some of the money which we feel will cover what we want. Thank you.
Can I come back?
Yes, just once.
But then I think this shouldn't have come this evening and just because it's been done and I've not mentioned it before, I don't think it should be repeated. And I think it's not difficult to go out and get a quote for printing work and come to council when it's ready. They've got a very tight budget, if you say fifteen hundred pounds, and I think they should start being a bit, a bit careful with what they are spending on marketing. It's like two hundred pound here, two hundred pound there. It's, it will soon go and then they'll want more money from the council.
As the clerk just reminded me, this is to the end, this financial year, which is about three weeks away.
I know, but I just, when we, when we make approvals, we should be having a paper trail to hold it back to a correct figure, not an estimate.
Thank you. Any other points on this? Can I have a proposal for this? Councillor Howard, second to councillor Stubbs. All in favour? Sorry, I can't. Sorry, I've just realised I've voted in half. Someone's steering group. That's right, okay. All right?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. All in favour? Okay, those against?
I'd like.
And we've got it.
Yeah, minute it that I'm just only voting against the marketing materials, it's unfortunate when you bunch things together like.
Your abstention. And one abstention, yeah, okay, thank you. Right, next one is item. There's a council restructure. All members who were here last year, where we've built a number of meetings we've had, which I think were possibly core meetings on looking at the change for the coming few years. So this paper really is a consolidation of what was discussed at the time. Come forward to you now to see whether you wish to.
Excuse me, chairman, I feel quite poorly.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not so good, I'm sorry. Sorry about this, but we're okay, I'm okay. I'm okay, I'll just go home. Sorry to disrupt.
It's okay, it's okay.
I'm all right, just let me go. If you could do that, Richard.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Just wait for the clock to run. It's that water. I've put something in the water. You should be nice. Right, okay, thank you very much. As I was saying, this, this was discussed over a number of evenings by councillors who were in position at the time. Obviously, the three new councillors will not be aware of this. And we came to a conclusion really after that, we thought this would be put forward to council for discussion as whether we wish to take this structure on and run it from, well, from the issues he proposed from the Gellington map. So I leave it now for people who are members to make comments on this. Councillor.
Thank you. I haven't had time to reflect on this. I wonder whether we should be looking at an bottom up structure rather than top down. And with the exception of the staffing committee, I wonder whether we didn't need any other committees at all. We have set up working groups and which are working very well, I think now. We have put in action plans which give council assurance that the working group is doing what should be doing, the working group should be doing rather. And we have a strategic plan which we're all working towards. So I'm suggesting that we, the staffing committee, which I think is essential for contractual reasons, but the other, but everything else is working groups. So that we are bottom up rather than top down form of management.
So can I just clarify that, what you're suggesting there is working groups are reporting to council?
That's right, yes.
A working group has no authority for spending, you realise that?
That is correct.
With the exception of staffing.
With the exception of staffing committee. With the exception of staffing committee.
Okay, I guess. That's fine.
Thank you. So this is new to me, obviously, but I think the proposed structure looks quite sensible. The only query I have is how the planning committee would operate. I mean, we talk of delegated powers, but the structure shows errors to the full council. So are we saying that there is actually reporting to the council? Or are they just saying what they've decided? Because I would be a bit concerned if we went through planning twice. So I think there needs to be proper delegation. Also, there would be a timescale issue if the planning committee made a decision and then it had to be rubber stamped by the full council, if that makes sense.
Okay, the, the point I think is that, what indication on the best structure is that the working group is the root, the, the working groups report. You'll see, um, policy and procedures in fact can be reported, a staffing committee or directed council, depending on the subject, where two others report direct to council, three report to finance and general purposes committee. But as we know, working groups do not have any authority, cannot spend. So obviously, the, those reports and those recommendations go through to the relevant committee for that authorisation. That answer your question?
Well, I was really getting at the planning committee.
Right.
Because, you know, that's a sort of statutory body. And I think it would be wrong if, if they were making a decision and then it had to be, uh, moved on further.
Yeah, I think the, yes, the point you're making is, is there that it needs delegated authority.
Yes, which, yes.
And you, you'll probably see from, from our leadership, that we need to be able to decide what that delegated authority would be.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, there may be certain planning decisions which need to come to council, some controversial decisions which the planning committee may feel they do not have the, the power, would want the council to make a decision on. Then that would be further true. But as always, we have problems with planning decisions because of the limited timescales which were allowed. And I think sometimes we get something like three weeks, which.
It's got to mention that anyway.
Yeah, yeah, on four five, we'd say that, um, if this goes through, then obviously we'd have to decide on the delegated authority um, for each committee, which would then come before, um, council on the eleventh of May at that part. So what, what we're looking at the moment is purely the organisation structure without the delegated powers associated with each committee. Does that answer?
This is, okay.
Okay, Council Books.
Right, and firstly, I object to you saying that we made a decision of what were informal meetings where some members actually chose not to attend because they were in formal meetings.
That's their decision, Council Books.
Yes, but if they were told they were meetings to decide the future structure of this council, then they were not properly advised that it was going to end up as a.
I, I, I reject, I reject, I will interrupt you whenever I want. I reject that assertion that they were not told, they were told, every member of this council knew exactly what.
This is what I said, they were not told it was a formal meeting, it was informal discussion. And then you have said we made a decision. I didn't agree with this, there was no vote, this is your proposal, Chairman.
It is not my proposal at all.
It is, it's not mine. I'm sorry, it's not mine and it probably wasn't the majority of the members at that informal meeting, you decided it. I won't sit down because I have to have my.
I'll overrule you, that's what I'm not going to do by, by my instructions.
I'm, I, I've started speaking and I want to talk about this.
I'm not going to let you unless you listen. Would you just listen?
Isn't it normal to allow me to speak and then you respond?
The point is that what you're saying is totally incorrect.
Well, tell me afterwards.
I'll tell you now. Totally incorrect, your assertion that members did not know that what they were deciding. Rubbish, I'm afraid.
Councillor Carr had an opinion as well, Chair, maybe she could.
Yeah, Councillor Carr, we'd like to go on.
I'd like to finish what I'm starting.
You can come back later on, listen to what other people have to say first.
No, sorry, you've gone round the room and you're not allowing me to have an input.
I'll allow you an input in a moment, just sit down, please.
Could I suggest a proposal that we explore, uh, councillor Hayley's, um, suggestion? Because I think there's some merit in that in terms of having the working groups, there's more of an operational, um, working groups that then feed into a higher strategic level that you don't actually need necessarily the other, the other, um, the middle tier, if you like. And I guess what I'm saying is having the operational groups, that maybe they're not able to make a lot of those decisions, particularly around budget spend. But certainly if their objectives were smart and were, um, uh, they had clear and defined outcomes and there was a mechanism where they could report in a little bit more smarter way. I mean, some of these reports are very good, but it would be nice to see them rag-rated. So if they were, they were completed, they would go to green, red clearly that this work, a lot of work still needs to be done and amber that, you know, there's somewhere in between. And I, I think if there was an overall community, uh, communication strategy as well that underpinned all of that, I think we could perhaps explore an alternative method or model.
That's right. It may be, what I'm going to say, maybe support what has just been said. Uh, and also what councillor Hayley referred to earlier. The, the, the construction here has twelve, um, monthly meetings of council, um, monthly meetings of planning committee and finance and purposes, general purposes monthly. Attention perhaps should be given quite strongly to what the working impact of this is on the very small team at the centre of the council who have got to be able to generate the necessary paperwork administration to reflect this. So there's quite a lot of work there involved in that present structure. Maybe the adoption of the, of the working group, um, template in principle would cut down the number of meetings and therefore the numbers of agendas, minutes and work to the centre. Without, that's without having any negative impact on the quality of information which the council gets. The improvement of the submissions brought about by the action, um, reports and the strategic plan is already going up. Leave that.
Stan as well.
Yeah, Stan Alkman to Council Books.
Sorry, thank you. Um, I, I'd just like to talk about the planning side of it because, first of all, it can't be monthly. Um, for, for new members, for the benefit of new members, uh, I was, um, I was the principal setter-upper of the new, the planning subcommittee. And my reason for doing that was because we have co-options, the new, new councillors come onto the council. They don't know the first thing about planning, but they're able to make a decision. Now, in my mind, um, that's not given a very good profile for the council. So what we did, we formed a planning subcommittee. I arranged training, so everybody on that planning subcommittee had training. And I think that's an important thing to do now if we have, have a planning, uh, subcommittee. It can't meet monthly because it's, it has to meet when, when plans come in. And it has to be dealt with, so there can be quite a few meetings. So that's the principle, my principle for planning.
I think going on from that, I think, um, probably all members require training, not just planning. Planning is one which.
But it's, but it's essential.
Yeah, well, yeah, so I agree with that and I think it's probably essential for all members to have training. That's a good.
Yes. I'll start at the top and I won't make the comments about how I felt that the informal meetings went, I'll repeat myself. Um, monthly for council is fine if you're just going to be doing the statutory things of approving accounts and things like that. This finance and general purpose committee can't exist. We are all councillors who make decisions or have the ability and the lawful ability to do that. By restricting it to this random number of eight means that all members of this council won't be able to have any input into the general administration of this council. I fully accept that we need a planning committee of trained members. And also, proper comment needs to be sent to Rotherham County Council. Um, because that was, as Mr Stug said this evening, the reason this upcommittee was set up. When I found out that comments weren't being sent and that we weren't being trained, I stepped down. And it wasn't for asking, because I'd asked numerous times about the training. Um, staffing committee is fine, we need it. But I don't understand why, forget for the moment the eight members of the finance and general purpose meeting, why you would want that to be bimonthly. Tonight, we're considering authorising the payment of an invoice for five thousand pounds. Now, we've had problems in the past where things have been paid because the due date has come. So for instance, if this committee was set up, we've met this evening. The clerk gets an invoice tomorrow and the finance committee, whatever you're going to call it, can't meet for two months. It, um, you know, the, the parks and planning meeting has been turned, I've lost count how many times that's been turned into full council because of the workload. So, and when I ask why this figure of eight, I'm told it's because of producing agendas and workload. It's only four more and everybody on this council should be able to have an input. And if I'm certainly, if I'm, I find that I'm not permitted on any working group on this council. So if I'm not permitted on that group there and not able to bring an agenda item to this council, if a member of the ward asks me to bring something to council, it's not going to be a happy council. And it would be my legal right as a councillor to have an input into the business. Now, yes, you can have committees. Now advises against it. It says we are a parish council and we should work as a team. We're losing the team. Yes, the chairman has said he hopes that all members will be on two committees. Well, he won't want me on the staffing committee. I don't want to be on planning and when I put my hand up to go on the finance, I'm sure you're not going to do that. And I'm not going to be happy to come here once a month listening to reports when members have decided that they are spending the taxpayers' money in the way they want to. And there could be four of us on that main council meeting who object, but we have no comeback because you're giving them delegated powers in your own writing in there saying that all other council business will be decided by that committee. Yes, the clerk said those words can be changed, but no, that's your words. You want to give all the power to eight members of this council. And that's not democracy. And I'll finish there because I will not be voting for this. I, I don't think that the work has been done properly. You want this rushed through and then you're saying, oh, we're going to decide what powers. This should have been done through a working group who sat down. If there is a need for some change, we need to scrap parks and planning. Because if nothing goes on in the park really, that couldn't be dealt with at council.
Number of points there, um, rushed through, we discussed this like October, it's like five months on from there. Um, it is not my report, I have written what was, um, recommended, decided, whatever you want to call it, at those informal meetings so that it would then come forward to this meeting for discussion. So nothing is decided, nothing, there's no, no, not decided, going to have eight members on there. That was what was discussed on, in those meetings we had. As was six me, six members on planning and five on staffing committee. So it's not my report, so don't keep saying it's my report, it's not, I have written it because I was chair. Okay?
Who appointed you chairman of an informal working group?
Would you just let me finish? Purely because of the, I forget, machinations of the, of the way the council works, that we had informal meetings. And your earlier comment there about people weren't told, that is totally untrue. Because every, every member of this council knew that we were discussing the council restructure.
I think you're misunderstanding what I was saying, they weren't told the serious nature of it. When you're invited to just come to an informal meeting, which has never happened before, people just thought it was a chat or a fight, as it turned out in many cases in those.
Well, I think your views of our informal meetings are way out.
I, I can play it to you now, Chair, and I have them recorded on here where I'm insulted and shouted at.
Please let me finish. Individual members were able to come to these meetings and put forward their views.
Yes, but I think I've explained that some of them felt they couldn't because they didn't realise the implication. Well, you overtalked me, Chair.
Yes, I was instructing you to sit down. Now, the point is that members have had the opportunity to discuss this, they have an opportunity again to discuss it. This is not concrete, if members want, so finance and general purposes weekly, they have a weekly. You decide what it is. This is purely for your discussion, that's what is put here before you. So nothing has been decided, nothing is concrete in this. And if, if you feel this is not the way you want to go, then you've got the opportunity of turning it down. But have your views on another way of doing something. Don't just be negative and say, this is no, can you let me finish? Don't just be negative and let, and just turn it down, what else have you got? We've had a couple of views from other members here about what, the way we can go. Okay, but this is not in concrete. I, I would say that again because it's here for you to discuss. That's Olivia.
Could we perhaps bring this round now to considering, instead of the negatives of what we hear, which have been discussed, uh, what might be workable alternatives or even the optimal workable alternative of which one or two have been put out? It'd be good to hear the views of as many people as possible on the alternatives, which will probably also deal with whatever negatives there are within this, it's just more positive approach.
I think the point would be that if, if we're going to say this is not the way we want to go, we'll have to go back and start looking at the ways we do want to go. It would not be for a discussion in this meeting because it would take too long. If you recall, the, the, um, three or four meetings we had took eight hours or so to, to run through. And during that period, there was a number of proposals put forward. Okay, councillor.
Um, it, it might be of interest to, to actually mention, why was it decided that there needed, that change was needed in the first place? So that we can all understand why we've arrived at this stage from what we have, from what the normal practices.
Exclusion.
That's all.
I'm tempted to say surely, but surely is no argument. Um, there are, everybody is around and the work you've referred to, Chairman, that's been done before and the, and the times being, is work that's done and it, everything is progressive. And I would have thought this evening could build on the progressive nature of what has already been proposed and come up with one or two proposals to take forward. But it's up to you, obviously.
That's fine.
Thank you. I started by saying I generally supported it and I still do. I think we're on the right track. To me, a working group is a, tends to be a temporary phenomenon, you know, it's, um, we're looking at a particular subject, whereas the committees are long-term or permanent. So I think that we need to be a bit of a distinction there. Um, what I was getting at earlier was, um, we, we seem to be saying two months' time, uh, we will decide, in particular, what the delegated powers are. I realize we've put a bit more flesh on the bones now or in between because that is something I've seen in the past. These delegated powers, um, become rather nebulous and then, then we get a double debate or repeat. So I think we need to be clear cut and, and time is moving forward pretty quickly.
Thank you. That's a good.
I want to be positive.
Right, right.
The, the financial matters or whatever you're calling this, procedures working group is the new title of the existing financial working group. I, as I said to them the other day, I may not agree with some of the things that have happened recently, but I understand why they're doing it. But I don't understand why they would be reporting to this committee of few members when councillors are legally responsible for the financial affairs of this council, all councillors. If something goes wrong between that working group and what that committee does, it's all the councillors that could end up being surcharged and it happens. And I'm not to be happy. Now, for the positive of this, I see the need. Now, for the positive of this, I see the need for a change. And what I see it is, yes, if you want to, um, have a committee that deals with things like approving general things, like what goes on in the park, the beacon lighting and things, if you want to make the main council meetings look a little bit more professional, then have the separate committee, but open it to all members who want to be involved in it. I can't see that any member of this council doesn't want to be involved with the general thing. So that is my sticking point on that. Um, a general purposes committee for the minor things would be fine. But I think finance is important to be considered by council. And the way we have it at the moment, with the very good work that the Financial Working Group does, works, that they report to council and we make the decisions. Now, we've got a situation coming up with, um, the accounts at the end of this year. Now, we did have the hiccup where we had to pay streets extra money because they couldn't wait to come to council for approval, which was literally a week away. Well, we could be in the situation again at the end of this, not this year, but that could happen again. And you're talking for some strange reason, two monthly meetings. So what I'm saying is, my proposal would be, now, I'm not putting it on the table, but you're wanting a positive suggestion, is we have council that meets monthly with the provision additional meetings are called. All the groups report to full council, so we know what's going on. We have a staffing committee, which I'm happy is made up of five members. We have a planning committee made up of six members who do proper training, not just a half hour at Rotherham County Council. Um, and we have a general purpose committee made up of all members, which is sort of renaming parks and planning. Because there is times when people have made comments, you're at a council meeting and you're talking about a whatever, something very minor, and it does look silly. So we are trying to become a professional council, but this structure to me doesn't work.
Can I have one more minute, actually? No, my councillor's counter about this.
I just want to sort of reiterate really, um, I appreciate other councillors' comments, but I do think working, working groups, if they're put in place properly, have proper terms of reference, have, um, a good communication strategy, could alleviate the need having a, a multitude of, of other meetings. The council meeting should be a strategic meeting. And so therefore, we should, we should be reporting up. And again, if they've got clear mandates, clear terms of reference, clear action plans, they're really, it really should cut down on the level of admin and further meetings. And if something were to arise, then call an extraordinary meeting. That's what happens in the world of other businesses and public sector organisations.
I think that's what I was trying to do.
So, you're working groups may be of temporary nature, they may be of more permanent nature. What they are, they are the operational management of the organisation. By having working groups, uh, feeding into the council, it, it allows the council meetings to be strategic, focused and a lot more professional than perhaps they aren't, as they not always are, I'm afraid to say. The, provide, I, I agree with what's been said. If the working groups' terms of reference are correct now set by council, we do now have an action plan reporting system, which avoids a lot of lengthy reports. It does provide, i- i- it is using a proper template, which we're, we're all using. It is allowing council to seek and receive assurance that the working group is doing what it should do. The working groups don't have delegated powers, don't need them because they are advisory, they are advising council from an operational level to allow council to make strategic decisions. And I think, as I said, it cuts out a middle layer of bureaucracy, which, other than the staffing committee, I don't think is really necessary for a parish council. The other strength would be when it comes to planning, as you know, planning applications come in and it's often only two or three weeks' notice. For the beauty of a working group, a working group can have a meeting whenever and however it likes. It's not set on a calendar, so it overcomes this problem of receiving planning applications, which can't be looked at or will be looked at in a hurry because not a meeting rang.
That's all.
Just to follow that up, working groups can be, can be given the strength and authority that the council decides to do. And it has embarked on putting the working groups as the engine room of what the council does. So I don't think it's, it's unnecessary to dilute the perception of working groups into something temporary. If, if it brings about, um, good quality reporting upwards, direct to the council, then it's forced, arguably forced for good. There's no temporary, or need to be anything temporary without that. And the administration of minutes and agendas is, is cut down drastically. That's really to repeat what various people have said, but shouldn't be lost of anything.
Can I make a proposal?
On this, and I'm going to go with the proposal.
Excuse me, chairman. Can I, can I make this proposal? I'd like to make a proposal, chairman.
Okay, well, there's a proposal on in the report.
Yes, but I'm allowed as a councillor to make a proposal. If it falls, it falls. Yes, I, I would like to propose that we accept a form of, um, restructuring, which abolishes parks and planning, abolishes the planning subcommittee. We then create, well, obviously, we retain the staffing committee. We retain full council, I'm just going across the page. We have a planning committee. We do not have a finance and general purpose committee. And, and all the terms of reference for the two committees below the council, staffing committee and planning, are, as you suggest, decided at a later meeting. Perhaps a working group is set up to agree or work on those terms because I don't know how you're going to do it, we can't do it via email. Um, and then that all working groups, as they currently are, report to full council. That's my proposal.
Do you want to have a second for that proposal?
Do you want me to repeat it, something?
Nothing.
Is Richard Guffey, he's making huffing noises, which I'm finding ill- take. See, I was, Richard, sorry.
The lengthiness proposal that I have heard.
Well, the, the proposal here is huge, you know, so I've sorted it. No, no, it's important.
Can I, can I just try and condense what you've just said? Remove Finance and General Purposes Committee?
Correct.
Remove Planning Committee? No.
No, no, subcommittee.
The council staffing planning committee, right? Finance and General Purposes. The committee's removed, just a moment. All working groups, all working groups report to council. Is that what you?
Yeah, so we're starting at top, we have a council meeting. We're not discussing the terms of when they meet, we're just, the structure is the proposal that says here, you know. So we, we have a council meeting. We have a staffing committee meeting. We have a planning committee meeting. We abolish parks and planning and we abolish the subcommittee of planning. So I don't even have to mention this thing on the right that's causing me a problem. So that's my proposal simplified. And then we set up a working group to, doesn't have to be done tonight, but at a, a later stage to set the terms and reference of the two committees and all working groups, I think, to report.
Okay, sit down.
So that's my proposal.
Can I, can I just say before, well, for a second for that? That, um, we spent a number of evenings working through it to come to this. And this seems to be very much off on the hoof, this one. And I'm a bit concerned, if we, um, if we vote on this. But I'll take your views on.
Is it possible to intervene?
Please do, please do.
That, and it's simply that councillor Haley made a proposal at the beginning that is not very far from what councillor Brooks just proposed, but argued it simply. And I'd like that repeated one.
Or can we consult?
If I have, I don't, don't cross second. Can we just, yeah, can we just please stop cross-table chatting? You have a.
But can we consult with Mr. Haley to get it right? Because we haven't had it read out yet.
Can you sit down, please? You've put forward a proposal, which has not yet been seconded.
No, but it hasn't been read out to be finalised. So I'm asking for Michael Haley's input, if that's okay for what Michael Elliott said. But I'm, I'm not perfect, so I don't, but I would like to get it right, that members are, could be happy with what I'm proposing.
Well, the proposal from, from councillor Brooks was that council, staffing committee and planning committee remain. That the planning, current planning and parks committee and planning subcommittee, uh, are abolished. Uh, all working groups report to council and the working group is set up to look at the terms of reference of the two committees. Does that sound what you, what, is that what you just said?
That's what I've said, but I would like to, because I trust Michael Elliott to be the wiser person. And I, I may have missed something.
Can I just ask you what's going to happen to the work presently done by the planning and parks committee and will be proposed by the finance and general purposes committee?
We don't have any work done by parks and planning. We, those meetings get changed to full council.
What does one of the first, one of the first finance and general purposes committee? Who's going to do the work?
The, the finance working group do the work. They, they do the work very well.
Okay. That's a, your assistance is required, unless by councillor Brooks, I don't care.
Yeah, it's not quite standard proposal I was making. My, my proposal was to maintain one committee, which is the staffing committee, everything else being working groups which report to council. So it'd be one committee, staffing only, everything else being working groups feeding directly to council.
Sorry, we're missing the point then, but we wouldn't have a planning committee, so we need that.
Just to make sense of stuff, hang on. I, I'm very concerned about this because we seem to be, as I said, doing this off on the hoof. And I think it's need more, more consideration than what we've given.
Chairman, I, I'm sorry, can I, I'm going to interject and sort of say that it occurs to me that we, we're not going to be able to sign this off. And I hope it shows that this, uh, the council reconsider this as a, a, a working group is assigned to actually look at this. And it needs to probably be a considerable working group as well, which is represented. Somebody probably might, it's not getting through.
Okay.
But basically, I would defer and get a working group set up.
I've got a proposal on the table from councillor Brooks.
Well, I try and like the idea, chairman, that we, that we defer. I don't want to take the risk that then we back down. I know that I can retract this, but are you, Adam, are you proposing?
Are you withdrawing your proposal? Are you withdrawing it?
Well, I just need confirmation that you will propose for a deferral.
Are you withdrawing your proposal, councillor?
Then I will withdraw it and I can.
Right.
I, well, I can propose that it's deferred. If I withdraw that, I propose that it's deferred and a working group is set up to look at this in a more.
Detailed.
Detailed way, I didn't want to say an offensive word.
Okay.
Well, I'm, chair, I mean, thi- this meeting, I've never, I've never known anything like it. In all my experience on councils, which is many, many years, it's frozen. And it seems to be now changing, it's something else, it's not like. Can we see if we've got a second and vote on it and then move forward from there?
Councillor Brooks has withdrawn his proposal.
Is that right?
Well, I'm definitely.
Is that definite?
So we do not now have a proposal on the table?
Well, I just made a new proposal that we defer. That we defer it and we set up a proper working group to look at it because it was not, it was not agreed.
Can we, rather than elaborate on what you're proposing, can you just give me a proposal?
My proposal is that this is deferred for the preparation of another report that sets up a working group who will look at this properly and take the input from all members, not invited informally, that they do proper report back to council at some later stage. And then I would imagine that the majority.
Becoming a one proposal again.
This is.
Well, that is my proposal, we defer it and, and, and that a working group is set up.
Okay. Your proposal is that this item is deferred and a working group is set up to investigate the restructure of the council?
Yes.
That's what you said. Do you accept, you second it?
Yes.
Okay, please say. Okay. All those in favour of that, of deferral and a working group set up to look at the, the, uh, the structure of the council? Four, nine, five, one, two, three, four, five, yes. All those against, please?
There were six, actually, I thought. Yeah, because there was.
Five, six, yes.
Six, sorry, can I just add that again, please? All those in favour, one, two, three, four, five, six. All those against, one, two, do you want that recorded? Upstairs.
Can I just say, one, show if I may, the reason I voted for, because I think it's the only way. We're going to move forward from what's in that.
Okay, so that's, there is no way that we can discuss that this evening? Right.
Sorry, if we need a separate working group, that would be.
It has to be an agenda item, it should be an agenda item at a later stage.
Okay, we can actually do each one, but. Okay, see you. Apparently they did. Item ten, four of these players. Very short, yeah, very short there. Um, one thing actually was brought to my attention and is on the table in front of you was you may have not got one piece of, one, uh, piece of paper from, uh, Amethyst. Um, the last page that you have, I think, ends delivery. You've got a page in front of you now, which tells you what they will do. We're not quite sure what's happened here because it's in my, uh, sort of, uh, pack, but I don't think it's in yours. Anyway, um, so you can see there from what Amethyst will want to do. You've got the costs from two companies that responded to, uh, the, the tender. Um, and, uh, both are quoting for exactly the same thing. In fact, I believe Amethyst took their, uh, the documents off of the contracts finder website. So that proves that that worked. Um, but, uh, there we are. Uh, and this was, uh, uh, after, uh, an audit was done of brackets, uh, decisions were made about cost scheme, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, you've just got costs in front of you there.
Just want to confirm, this is definitely for planting and watering.
Planting and watering.
Yeah, thinking.
Yep. Watering and maintenance, any kind of.
Thank you.
Have a purr, please, to accept one of those, um, contenders. Sorry, can I just, councillor Howard? You're proposing what?
I'd accept.
What? No, that's what I'm saying. You've got, you've got two tenders there.
I just paved.
Can I propose, can I propose that we accept Plantscape, being the cheapest one, save five grand over three years?
Proposal is to accept Plantscape.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yeah, sure.
I'd like to know on what, how do we score? How do we score?
There, there is no scoring as a matter of truth, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, cheap doesn't necessarily mean the best. And if there's a criteria against what we score, you actually might find a one that is more expensive, actually offers the better quality and the better value for money. So that's what I'm just saying.
I've got a proposal, Plantscape, accept Plantscape, um, correct, number second. That's all. All those in favour of accepting Plantscape? All those against? Abstentions, two, three. Oh, sorry. Um, grant applications, that's all. First up, application is from the Rotherham Council back. For present time, we have one thousand seven hundred and sixty-two pounds fifty p left in this budget. Just for information. One, seven, six, two, fifty p. Remaining in the budget.
Second again, please.
One, seven, six, two, fifty p remaining in the budget. We have an application, a further application which failed to get in before the, the deadline for this council. So another one which will come in to the next council meeting. But that is not for consideration this evening. We have the fourth application, the first one is from the Rotherham Council back, for four hundred and eighty pounds. Councillor Brooks.
Um, I'm sorry, but I'm going to object to this because obviously I've been to two poms in the past. And to me, spending public money on bangers, which, yes, they slightly improve. And to me, spending public money on bangers, which, yes, they slightly improved last year, but most people were sitting in a cloud of smoke. I don't think it adds to the event, and I think the council could spend four hundred and eighty pounds on, on something better. And when I read an application that says the event is going to provide lots of happy, smiley faces, a live video of the event, and most people were asleep or
So yours have a bit of happy smiley face now?
They didn't really have happy, smiley faces, they woke up when the bangers went off, but I'm not very musical, but they didn't appear to be in time either. So I won't be voting for this expenditure.
Any other comments?
Just like to ask if we have got this bound down as our, on any of the bands performing?
Rotten Concert Band, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, we, we have later on in the year.
Okay, any other comments? Can I propose then for, to accept the request of four hundred and eighty pounds for the Rotten Concert Band? Councillor Howard, seconded. All those in favour? Three, four, five, six, seven? All those against? Councillor Brooks, recorded?
Yes.
Abstentions? Again, two abstentions. And the next one is for the guide association. Which is for one thousand pounds, councillor Brooks.
Yeah, I, I have no objection to this being granted, but what I do object to, and it happens frequently over the years, is that, and we don't often get much reporting back, is they say if they don't need it, they might return it to us. My view is that you don't pay anything unless it's needed, so I would, I would say that we agreed the grant, if I'm allowed to, but we don't pay it until it's needed. We get so many times, people say, oh, we'll pay it back, and then you hear little rumours that it wasn't actually spent on the thing, and there's no checks.
I noticed, Chair, that they say we have some funds of our own. I lack know of those funds.
I don't think they say you're right.
And the second thing is, they've just got one quote. I would like to get three quotes.
Well, as I said in the letter to you, went out with your pact that we do have three quotes in the office from them. And the cheapest one was for the one that is, is stated on the, on the application. There are three quotes in the office. So if you want to see those quotes?
In view of the fact that the guide association have been long established in Oakham, this pot has been built for a very long time. And because they have got other funding that they have sought, and they are asking for a contribution of a thousand pounds, I propose that we grant the full application for a thousand pounds.
Second of that, then, councillor Howard. All those in favour of granting a thousand pounds to the guide association? Five, six, seven, eight. All those against? Abstentions? Two abstentions, yeah.
Didn't get my confirmation.
Okay, thank you. Now, on to the next matter. The external audit opt-in, over to what? Uh, yes. So the audit regime is changing, it's not changing for a couple of years now, you've got all, you've got all of the information there. But quite simply, the recommendation from our, sort of, all the councils, oversee if you like, which is the Leicester Rotten Association local councils, is that it remains opt-ed in. To opt-out is, as they used to describe, a complex statutory process, probably beyond open town council, probably beyond most parish councils in the country. It's, in the words of, well, somebody, it's a no-brainer. Any comments on that? Number four, to accept? Councillor Low, seconded by councillor Hayley. All in favour? You know us. And thirteen is review effectiveness of the council's systems of internal control. You want to take it with assistance from councillor Elliott and Hayley? Uh, what, what you've got a branch of you are, the systems of internal control are introduced in September, or sorry, reviewed in September two thousand and fifteen. Up until September two thousand and fifteen, there were another set that were approved in September two thousand and fourteen. Now, a number of improvements were made in the systems of internal control. These are, you know, proving to be very, very effective, there is, you know, lots of good work that has been done that wasn't being done before. And you've got a recommendation and proposal there that the systems of internal control of the council are, have been effective. And this needs to be done for the annual governance statement, which you will be seeing hopefully in May. Questions, please? No, it's, that's fine.
Okay, Chairman, yes, I may have missed it, but I can't see anything about, well, there's a heading asset control, but do we have a system in place that looks at the risk of the investment of assets?
Um, finance working group, actually, we, we were talking about this when we met on, yesterday. And we are hoping to have something for, for you by the end of the month, on the twenty-third. On, on financial, we do have a financial risk assessment. So, and that is, we do, we do have a financial risk assessment, Peter, yes, so you will be seeing it, yes.
Chairman, just a reminder, what I'm getting at really is, do we have an approved list of where we can invest? I'm thinking that at County Council, we had problems with the famous Icelandic bank. And there are other questionable banks, and there are risks attaching for getting a little bit of extra interest.
We have discussed that particular, the emphasis we just placed on, on that subject, and are considering taking independent advice on the scope and the evaluative banks or local authorities who will lend to the council with, with some form of professional compensation free. We thought, not trying to sound, we thought that's probably wise, to the subject to bang it at price for what financial, independent financial advisors will charge for that.
Councillor Brooks?
I, I would like to make a point about the, the risk. And one of the, because obviously this is all about risk, I did notice, and forgive me for not looking at the page, and I have raised this before. We seem to hold a lot of money in accounts, very few accounts, and we're not covered by any financial reality, whatever they call it, payback, and I noticed that we had a hundred and sixty thousand pounds in the HSBC deposit account, a bank which is going through a bit of a, hopefully it won't collapse, but I think we're taking too much risk, and I'd like to have seen that that was-
As I say, this is something that was discussed by the finance working group yesterday, about there are, there are very few institutions at the moment that will take local authority funds.
But there are other banks where money-
No, Martin, there are very, very few, I mean, last year the Coop Bank shut all of its parish council accounts, okay? There are very, very few organisations, banks, et cetera, et cetera, that will take parish council funds. There is something, it was set up in the wake of the Icelandic bank scandal, which, which Pete has just referred to, which is called the Public Set Deposit Fund, which we are going to be looking at, and what that is, is, is a single point, but it spreads its investments across a wide range of institutions. So the risk to the council's money is mitigated, okay? So that's something that we will be looking at, and will be bringing to, will be bringing to council.
Okay, well, that's just, I wanted some confirmation.
So, and, and the point that, that Michael was here was making is, some work was done a couple of years ago on this by, by former councillor Rob Guthrie, about financial institutions that would take parish council funds, and there are, you'd think they'd be falling over, but they're not, they're not. And you're dead right, parish council investments are not covered by the financial compensation scheme. It doesn't matter how much money you've got in there, it's not covered.
That's why I feel it's a bit risky to have the large sums that we're having one bank-
That's why they're looking potentially at another, instead of holding a considerable sum of money within the HSBC itself, maybe moving some of that into something like the Public Set Deposit Fund. Okay, so that will be coming to council.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I just support Clark in that point, that to assure the council, the working group is fully aware of the risks, it is actively looking at how we can reduce those risks, and we will report it back to council while it's actually planned in due course.
Thank you. Now, I've proposed then to accept the recommendation that the council would view the effectiveness of the systems of internal control, and conclude they have been effective during twenty fifteen, sixteen. Councillor Stubbs, seconded. Councillor Howard, all those in favour? You know us, thank you. And also, the second one is the finance working group reviews-
Chair, if I may, I'd just like to congratulate the committee on what they thought for.
The working group?
The working group, and their assurance that they're looking into it, I think they're really on top of it.
The effectiveness again, the earth opportunity, and reports back to council with this recommendation. Not sure that means. Basically, Chair, what, what the finance working group would like to do is gradually move, move this new system of internal control right to the start of the financial year. So at the moment, it's being brought in in the middle of the financial year, but we would like to gradually get it back, so it's approved in April, and then a review of it in March, so you've got a full year of one set of internal controls, rather than what we've got at the moment, where it's split between twenty fourteen, fifteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. So we'd like to try and get a new set in front of you as early as we can in the new financial year. Well, April, May time, I'm sure. Yeah, it's more in April, but, you know, as soon as we can. All those in favour of that? Let's start with the proposal. Councillor Howard, councillor, I'm the second, all those in favour? Okay, nineteen fourteen is the pen for invoice of over five thousand pounds, which part of the financial regulations have come before council. This pen was agreed by council three or four months ago.
No, it's January when we reviewed the insurance provision.
Okay, it's beginning of this year, not a month, sorry, ago. So it has already been agreed that this pen will be made, what we need now is authorisation for the invoice number to be paid, which is five thousand one hundred and sixty-five pounds to the zero, and so on. Now, both of them. All those in favour? You know us, thank you very much. Chairman, payments. Nineteen fifteen.
Just get the right number. It's an objection to a payment of taxpayers' money, three, two, five, for open wines, sixty pounds. I don't believe there are many councils in this land that spend taxpayers' money on wine. Especially when the event only raised a hundred and seventy-four pounds, and the total cost completely outstripped the money that was raised.
So what is your proposal?
Well, I'm just objecting formally to the payment from the chairman's fund of sixty pounds for wine. And I'd like that minuted, but I object to it. Yes, and I, and I would hope that it wouldn't happen again, but I've got a feeling with wine for Secco Wine for another probably loss-making civic event this month. When have it, April, so? It should get sponsorship, Chairman.
I'd like your views on that, if you can get me some sponsorship.
I'm sure you could.
You propose it, councillor? Propose acceptance, councillor Howard, thanks. Councillor Howard, seconded, councillor Stubbs, all in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One abstention.
Two abstentions.
You're abstaining, I don't think. And that's why you stand with the chance. The bank reconciliation has been verified by councillor Elliott. Are there any questions about this? Number four, we're set, no, we're capped, councillor Howard, councillor Stubbs, second, all in both. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Against? Abstention, two. Now, just had a vote again, if there's one in favour, except in the accounts. Four, five, six, seven, eight. And two abstentions. Okay, immediate on date, that's twenty twenty-seven.